We'll have a moment of silent meditation, the pledge of the flag, and our thoughts and prayers with Bobby Doyle and his family. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All three county commissioners here. It is November 6, 2019. It's 10 o'clock in the morning. We will now have consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have no exonerations for you today.
Yay.
We have minutes for October 30, 2019. Vouchers for General County Fund, $209,037.93. Coal Severance, $1,007.27.99. 911, $1,004.49.29. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,075.803. Camp Muffley, $530. Mason Dixon Park, $6,018.57. Assessors valuation, $6,764.36. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $12,283.93. 911, $213.49. Home confinement, $6,009.0865. Chestnut Ridge Park, $5,1867. Mason Dixon Park, $162.29 for a voucher total of $249,436.20. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Bannon Delebbed Enforcement Agency, Deckers Creek Public Service District, and Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board. Fiduciary orders for November 6, 2019, and a statement of services for fiduciary Commissioner George Armstead.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay, we have introduction of new employees, personnel changes. MJ, hello, come on down. Natasha, is it Lambria?
Lambria, yes.
Lambria.
I know you guys will see me a lot, but this is it. So, this is Natasha. She has a long background in mentorship and peer recovery coaching. She also worked for the Mon County Schools for 10 years?
20.
20 years. So, I think she would be a great asset. This is a full-time position, weekends going into some other week shifts. So, if you could approve Natasha and also Amber Ware. She's not here, but she left in June for a family emergency. She's now back in town, so she's going to revise some of that part-time work.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other introduction? Yes, we do.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce to you Patricia Low, who is starting today in the county clerk's office. She's going to be working in our recording department. It will be a full-time, non-exempt position with benefits.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and welcome.
Welcome to the county.
Glad to have you.
Good luck.
Go to work.
Yeah, go to work. Sorry. Okay, we had open responses for notice of bid number 2020 MCC-CA01. What is that for?
We received one response from a company called CDE Animal Cages, and this is for new animal cages at the Canine Adoption Center.
Okay, we have an invoice. The total amount would be $26,207.12. And they wrote in here, "Thank you for the opportunity. We are thrilled for the chance to work with us. Please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions." And that is, you said the company.
Can you just refer that to?
Yes, CDE Animal Cages. Refer to?
Refer to Dana.
Dana and them. Great.
Since we only have one offer, she can refer it to her, and she can validate it against published pricing or whatever. And then if she does validate it, then we can proceed.
I'll have her come back with the recommendations.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Moving on, we now have comments from the public. We ask if you come down, state your name, your address, and then we'd appreciate four minutes. We do not have.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Nichols. I live at 330 Dreamcatcher Circle in the Stewartstown area. And I'm 10 minutes later than I was supposed to be, hoping to be, because they're working on the road. And this is the third day in a row when we're getting patching done on the section from 119 down to the winery. And, you know, 10 minutes late. I'm not complaining. I'm happy to get the patchwork done. What they're doing is not ordinary patching, because they're digging out old asphalt, okay, that's depressed and cracked and broken. And the sections that they're creating are approximately 10 or 15 feet long. They're at least three feet wide, maybe wider, and the depth is between three and four inches. So, the trucks to haul in the asphalt are pretty good size.
Okay.
May I hand you this?
Sure.
Thank you. I don't want to come out. Up in the meetings of the Public Service Commission.
We're very informal.
Charleston.
Yeah.
And they let the attorneys approach and bench.
Well, that's Charleston. They don't.
Hi, Ed. Thank you very much. Now, I would normally bring you something that I didn't write, but in this case, I saw the man write this, and he sent it to me, and then I had it printed or published, whatever you call it, on the Internet. And the very fine print at the bottom, which I hope nobody reads, says where I got this. So, this was actually printed right off of the Internet this morning. And it asked the question, "Should the resident citizens have input to a pilot agreement?" The title, "A Pilot Agreement for Longview Should Be Based on Realistic Principles." That's my construction. The author here has the title, "Mon County Needs a Fair Pilot Agreement for Longview." And it raises some concerns or issues or opportunities that perhaps we haven't talked about before. And I'm not going through all of it, but my position, independent of this, is it would be wonderful to have a new gas plant to replace the existing coal-fired power plant, given the air pollution, the water pollution, given all the trucks. I go over, I have relatives, friends in Mount, in, over Fort Martin, and those people have these trucks. 300 trucks a day on the road, in addition to the steam and the effluent coming out over there. So, in conclusion, the county commission needs to be skeptical of any cost estimates proposed by Longview, making sure that the payments are proportional to actual cost, which wasn't true in the past. At some point, I hope to write down for you the concerns that existed back in the day when we built Longview 1. Thank you for this opportunity to come here today.
Thank you for sharing this with us. We appreciate that.
Jim Coatsen has a coworker in the Sierra Club named Betsy Lawson, and she's here today.
Okay. Hi, Betsy. If you just state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Betsy Lawson. I live at 1213 Gallus Road, which is out near Cassville on Route 7 West. My neighborhood is beset by strip mines that leach acid mine drainage, and the latest scourge is the bogas fracking pad out past New Hill, which is keeping people awake, because it often runs all night, and the noise is such that people out there are not getting a good night's sleep. It's a health hazard, and the truck traffic is terrible. The plan to expand Longview Power Plant with a gas-fired plant is disturbing to me. The company wants the Mon County Commission to approve a huge tax break instead of assessed property taxes. Another fossil fuel plant means even more air and water pollution, resulting in higher health expenses. While natural gas claims to burn cleanly, fracking is not a clean process. Fracking pads leak methane, a powerful greenhouse gas, and generate millions of gallons of toxic wastewater. There is no such thing as clean fossil fuels. Longview's an electric wholesale plant, so all the energy generated there goes into the national grid and is not necessarily consumed here, nor will it make our rates any cheaper necessarily. That Longview filed for Chapter 7 bankruptcy in 2013, two years after it went online, does not instill confidence for future performance. Children around the world are begging us to protect their future. Why should we invest in fossil energy sources that are guaranteed to rob them of it? We should not give tax breaks and incentives to fossil fuel industries. The Mon County Commission has an opportunity to say yes to the children by saying yes to the solar energy, but no to another fossil fuel plant. Thank you for giving me this chance to talk.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, please. We'll keep them. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning. How you doing?
Good. How are you? My name is Kim Noble. I reside at 302 Duquesne Avenue in Morgantown, but I also own Dirty Bird at 301 High Street in Morgantown. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. It's my understanding that the Sheriff's Department retains full responsibility within the county. That is why we, as business owners, are asking for your help in addressing the downtown issues. I would imagine many, if not all of you, are aware or have witnessed the poor behavior and demeanor of some individuals loitering downtown, and more specifically, many that are visitors of the Fenchyp House on Walnut Street. We, as business owners, have expressed numerous times, have expressed our concern numerous times to the city council, as well as to Chief Preston, with no avail. Chief Preston addressed the city council a couple weeks ago, where he spoke about the problems downtown and how, due to certain laws, it prevents or interferes with his department being able to address these issues to successful levels. It was very frustrating to hear, for if any of us assembled here today behaved in these manners, we would be dealt with entirely differently. Approximately a week and a half ago, one of our fellow business owners was assaulted while leaving her business in broad daylight. She was with her eight-year-old son, who, needless to say, was left terrified and distraught. How many more red flags need to be raised to be able to get some positive results before we head to complete chaos? The downtown foot traffic is diminishing rapidly. Pedestrians try to avoid coming downtown and specifically avoid walking down Walnut Street to prevent negative confrontation. Is this truly what the city of Morgantown is willing to accept? We are a college town, a Division I school. We should be enveloped in a clean, safe, and prideful atmosphere that welcomes new and old residents, students, and visitors, and draws these people to our downtown businesses and to enjoy the views downtown. Please help achieve, please help us achieve and maintain a better downtown and ensure a level of safety to our businesses and all people. As we, as we, business owners, are here to help to find a solution, we are sincerely asking for your department and commission to be willing to take the lead in helping us to come to a resolution in this problem. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Swain. I own a business at 245 Walnut Street. It's on the corner of Spruce and Walnut, and they're in between the services that Kim had mentioned. I wanted to thank you all for having us today. We just wanted to come and talk to you, because you're our neighbors, because hopefully you'll be able to help us with our downtown concerns. I'm not going to repeat what Kim had said. She told you, you're aware of the situation down here. But I wanted to let you know that we have spoken with our city council several times over the last two months, and again last night. One of the major action items that needs to occur in our community is communication and collaboration. So, we are asking for you to help, to get additional help from our sheriff's department, to help patrol your own backyard, to help work with us, to help work with council and other members of our community, to help solve this issue before it gets too out of control. We are a community, and downtown is the heart of our city. I live in the county. I work in the city, and I want to be able to have a safe downtown. So, please help us work together to tackle these problems, to keep our downtown safe and clean, so that, in the long run, it's good for our entire city and our entire county, and hopefully for our entire state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. Before you go, could we get your name again? I apologize.
Stephanie Swain.
Stephanie Swain. What? Could you spell the last name?
S-W-A-I-M.
N. S-W-A-I-M. And Kim, is it?
Noble. N-O-V-I-L-E.
I-L-E. Okay. Thank you, Kim. Hi, how you doing?
Greg Rollins, Halleck Road.
Hi.
I know you guys are getting ready to go down to Charleston and talk to the DOH, hopefully. And on the Halleck Road where I-79 goes over, the Halleck, it's propped up with steel columns. And it's been that way for almost a year, well, over a year now. And there's rebar hanging out of it, concrete missing. I was just hoping that you'd mention that to them and ask them what their timeline might be for fixing this thing. They know about it, obviously. They put the steel columns in. It's kind of scary looking, actually, to drive under and over, I'm sure.
Could you say your address, just so she has it?
227 Halleck Road.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? I'm looking in the back. Okay. Seeing none, we will close. Comments from the public. We now have grants. Ms. Colleen Kuhn?
I have the grant contract for the Community Development Block grant for the Morgantown Area Youth Service Project. They are receiving $14,000 in funds for that. Just going to sign that.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Just before we go on, since this is a light agenda, we will respond afterwards, so it won't be as long as that city council meeting, okay? Correspondence. Letter from Tim Ball, general manager, regarding the completion of River Road PSD acquisition.
He just wanted to let you know that that's been fully accomplished, and all elements of the transaction have been completed.
Fantastic.
Good.
Good. Any other correspondence? Seeing none, we'll go to unfinished business. Any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Moving to new business. Consideration to approve appointment to the Mon County Development Authority.
Jack Thompson has applied to be on the development authority. We referred that application to the development authority. They have sent back a letter signed by Pat Martin, who's their chairman, saying that they would be happy if we appoint, if the commission appointed Jack.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider approval, requisition number three for the University Town Center EODD Subordinate Special District Excise Tax Revenue and Improvement Bond Series 2017B Project Funds.
I actually spoke to the gentleman from Unicap that's handling the review of the backup documentation, and they are not ready to approve it yet. I think they're asking for some additional information from the developers, so.
Just remove that at this time.
You can table it till next week, if you wanted to.
Will it be done by next week?
Yeah, let's just.
They hope to. You want to just?
I'd rather just remove it in case they need another week.
Okay.
Okay. Approval of 2019 Annual TIF Report, as required by the West Virginia Development Authority.
This year, we had, we asked Septo and Johnson, who is obviously our bond attorney, to prepare that report. They have provided that to us, and it is ready for the commission's approval. You have any questions?
No, I looked it over. I know last year they came in and actually did a presentation, but it's pretty comprehensive, and it covered any questions I have, so.
And then, obviously, the commission is required to advertise this in the paper.
Oh.
So, this will also appear in the newspaper.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve a maintenance support agreement with Idemia Identity and Security USA LLC for the period of January 26, 2020 through January 25, 2021, for the LiveScan system at the Mon County Justice Center.
And the amount of the contract is $4,811.
Okay.
And this is a yearly renewal.
Right.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval the option to renew the contract with WVU for processing transporting services to the North Central Regional Jail for individual, individuals arrested by the WVU Police Department for the period of January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020. I think they just go by a different.
They do.
Contract time.
They follow calendar. Their budget follows fiscal year.
Yeah.
But they do a calendar. Yes.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve funding for up to $4,174.61 for fire hydrant relocation by the Clay-Battel Public Service District.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve lease agreements for properties purchased by the county commission through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program on October 26, 1998, described as Cast District Map 1 Parcels 0013, 0015, and 0016 to the adjoining property owner, Brian Dennis.
These are documents that you've approved in previous years. This is the number, we have a number of parcels in Osage that were all bought at the same time, after the flooding down there, so.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye. And finally, to consider increasing the size of Camp Muffley Advisory Board from five members up to seven members. Did you want to just say anything, or is it just self?
It's self-explanatory, but actually, it's a credit that we have people that want to serve on boards. So, I felt that by increasing it to seven, we would be able to accommodate those who wish to volunteer. So, this would actually free up a spot. Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any more? Do we have reports from any elected officials? Good.
I would just like to come before you. Our office, of course, we run the finance office for the county, and we have been in the process for the last several years trying to get a good feel or a good list of all of our county employees who serve as veterans or who've served in the military. And Monday will be Veterans Day, and we have finished that project. And I would like to read, we are going to take out a little ad of honor and appreciation to these employees. We have 26 employees out of the 320-some who work for the county, and I would like to read their names to you. Working for the Youth Services Center, Jennifer Gosley, who served in the Navy. The Sheriff's Department, Anthony Alger was in the Coast Guard. Anthony Bice, the Army. Isaac Coe, the Marine Corps. Jonathan Friend, Army. Jared Kerr, Army. Jared Lanive, Army. John Matlich, Army. Steve McCroby, Army. Ethan Mongold, Air Force. Frederick Morgan, the Navy. Eugene Olish, Army. Donnie Powell, Army. Corey Schubert, Marine Corps. Lawrence Springer, Army. Richard Yost, the Air Force. In the prosecuting attorney's office, Warren Elliott was in the Army. Ted Nordstrom, the Army. Mecca 911, John Clodges, was in the Marine Corps. Harold Springer, or Sperringer, in the Army. County Commission, Alan Burner was in the Army. Harold Buzzy, Army. Mike Paul, Marine Corps. Jeff Welsh, Air Force. Katie Westfall, Army. In the county clerk's office, Stephen Murphy, National Guard. Anna Lee Robbins, Navy. And just as a thank you to these employees for their service, their protection, and support on behalf of Montague County Government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is very nice.
In fact, I was thinking, would it be possible if we could put that on our website, endless that? Okay, I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Is there any other elected officials? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to ask if we can suspend the rules before we do the reports for the county commissioners. Did anyone want to respond to any of either the downtown, the individuals who voiced a concern about the downtown before we move on, so we can have a general discussion between you two of us rather than?
No, that's fine. I appreciate you guys coming. We are your neighbors. We do hear you. We do hear, have some of the same concerns. We, I've personally, on behalf of commission, has had a couple conversations with the group that's kind of put together an action, you know, an action item in regards to how to address this. I don't know where that, where that is right now, but, you know, I stand ready and waiting to help participate to so that the county is part of the conversation. And I applaud those, the people I was meeting with was J. Giuliani and Ron Delaney, and then I'm going to forget her name from help from Christian Hope.
Colleen?
Colleen, yes. So, again, we just had one initial meeting, but, you know, what, what we came out of that meeting is, listen, you know, however you guys are going forward with this, we're, we're ready to be part of the conversation. So, we're actually just waiting to see where it goes. But we do, we do hear you. We've had, you know, complaints about things around the courthouse that we personally witnessed. So, again, we are, we are neighbors, and we are concerned, and we want to participate.
I'll echo those sentiments and actually add that no matter what, we, we will be looking toward solutions. Obviously, it's not an easy task that, you know, that you're looking at, but surely there has to be a solution.
And a lot of the, a lot of the possible solutions, I mean, absolutely require the county. I mean, we've been talking, it's come up time and time again about, you know, having a, for lack of a better word, what they call a drunk tank, sober center, whatever. And those conversations always seem to just drop off when something else comes up. So, we certainly want, want to participate in those conversations.
And just so you know, several years ago, I was on the Downtown Homeless Coalition. I've been on like three or four, and we've had submitted reports. Unfortunately, you do the work, submit the reports, and they've been sitting there. I watched the video last night. In fact, I watched it live. You did an exceptional presentation last night, and I do agree with you that we do need to work, and the word is cooperation. And I think what has happened is everyone's protecting their own turf and worried about their own silos, and we need to break those down. So, we work together, and I appreciate you doing it. And I'm adamant on part that we, I think we are missing that. I understand the protection of the rights of the individuals, but when they affect other individuals and when they affect the business owners and the economic development of downtown, we have to really reevaluate. And hopefully, we will do this. I have requested the sheriff to be a part of that conversation. Hopefully, we will now get the sheriff back in there. And I know all three of us are very concerned that a strong downtown makes a strong city and county. And we have to really move forward and quit talking about it. and county, and we have to really move forward and quit talking about it. Action speaks louder than words.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate the business owners downtown. I mean, it'd be very easy to be elsewhere, but you, you want to be here, and we want you here, so, and I know you have to put up with a lot to be here, but I do appreciate your efforts.
I think you have started the initial, I think we needed you to come out, honestly, to get the ball rolling again. And I think, you know, we've talked, but now I think we all need to work together, and I think there are some ideas that we can come up with, and we look forward to hearing from them, but we can't get involved. Hopefully, they will contact us, and I will say, just not for monetary basis, but for input. Thank you. I, I can't, I'm sorry. I can't open it, sir. Does anyone else want to respond on any other issue that was brought up? Not at this time. Okay. Before we move on, I have to ask one more thing. I happen to notice there are some officials from the DOH here. I did not know if you were planning to come speak before us, or did you want to talk with us afterwards? So I, you do not have to. I'm just asking. Were you interested in speaking before us or not?
[laughing]
I'm got, because, it's a shocker you're here. I'll be bored, fine. So, I'm going to give you that opportunity if you want, or we can talk afterwards.
All right. Well, I tell you what, we'll do both. How about?
Okay, that's great. Well, if you come down, introduce yourself. We know who you are, Darby, but others. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Darby Clayton. I'm the district engineer here in District Four.
The tape's going.
It won't change much of anything that I'm going to say right now. I would like to thank the gentleman that got caught in traffic for 10 minutes. I'm glad it was just 10 minutes, because any more than 15, I'd have had to fuss with somebody, but I'm glad it was 10. I'm glad he understands, and thank you for explaining how we're actually patching the potholes right.
Yes.
And making improvements, so I appreciate that.
Exactly.
As far as the Halleck Bridge project, sir, it is being developed to repair. It does look scary, I agree, but it's perfect. It's safe. I promise you. I drive across it. Just, I might drive a little faster. No, it's, it's, it's safe, and we are monitoring it, so, but it is going to come out as a project shortly, as a design-build project, so we have been working on it, so. And other than that, I mean, I'm open for, well, questions or comments real quick, and then, like I say, if there's anything you want to talk about afterwards, we'll be glad as we can, so.
Well, Darby, I appreciate you being here. And again, your position's like that of a IT professional. You know, when everything works, you don't hear anything, but when it's broken down, you certainly hear all of it. So, I know it's, I know it's a very tough job, especially in this region, with the inability to keep, keep staff and keep people hired. I do see the things that are going on in this county. My only complaint, and I'm not one of the ones that complains, is just make sure that we have an ongoing dialogue. So whether that be quarterly, whatever, just so we can, because we get all the complaints, we get all the questions, and we need to filter that out, and it's, it's just so much easier if we sit in a room and, you know, discuss the current issues and where things are going, so that we can disseminate that information for you and work with you to, to make sure that any, any misunderstandings or any understandings are correct. So, I do appreciate you guys being here. I know if you're, it's a catch-22. You're here and work's not getting done, you know, so.
Right.
But, so we don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I do, would like to make sure that we at least have a, a regular dialogue again. So, absent that dialogue, some people will reach out to Charleston, and we know that's not helpful, because you're just trying to get your work done. You don't have to answer at Charleston.
Exactly. Okay. Not a problem?
Yeah, I, I actually would like to echo what was said regarding stores down the road, because I received some very good compliments. I, I try and stay away from anything that's negative, but still, when you, you should pass along those compliments, that it's being done and being done in a fashion that's good, so.
Well, we've been trying hard all year to get that mindset changed and things working forward. The, some of the work we've been doing, we've actually had the ability from this new administration to put out the work through purchase orders. So, some of the ditching that's been done in Mon County has been done by contractors for us to help our state forces out, and some of the patchwork has been. So, we're trying that as a pilot program, and actually, that was the first, Mon County was the first one in the state to do that, so.
And we did, we did note at our meeting yesterday that Chaplain Hill is getting not just replacement of those damaged guardrails, but completely new guardrails.
Right.
So, thank you.
And the, the project that Mr. Nichols was talking about, you know, Beechhurst, I drive up and down there every day and wonder, why, why aren't we patching those potholes? And again, it looks bad, because the potholes were in the center where the lines were, so the lines are painted over top of potholes. So, it's things like that, that now that it's done, it's great, you know, it, I'm happy to see those things being done. And things are being done. Sometimes it's just not quick enough for us, but they are being done.
I agree with, I agree with you totally. They're not quick enough, but we are, we are trying.
And the other thing is, obviously, people are always asking us about the roads prosperity projects, and I know that those things, there's always issues in how they're built out, but I know that there's things coming for, for instance, exit 53, 55, and those things, they're, they're on, they're on their way.
They're on their way. I don't want to steal anyone's thunder above me with that, but they are, they are on their way. Stay tuned for 2020. It's going to be exciting.
I, I want to preface my remarks, since I've been the most vocal, that every one time I speak, I do not talk about what is going on locally, but because what, how you're limited, whether it's, you only have 18 people, we're funded for 44, whether it is the equipment, and then it's the state making the major decisions. There are clearly, and I don't think anyone will disagree, that there's so much more work being done than has ever been worked before.
Okay.
Now, where am I concerned, and I will say it to you again continuously, and just so you know, we did send a package, and I did finally get it, a certified letter back. I sent it specifically to the governor. I have more information I could share with you. The concern is, please, we've asked, what we'd like to know is what you've actually done on the specific road, so we know it's been done, so we can take, Mike Paul is the GIS coordinator over here, to look at the maps, see what's done, and then what still needs to be done. When I keep getting questioned from Mr. White, what do you want more done? Until I know what has been completed, and what you say is completed, or what the public thinks is completed, is different. And that's where a lot of the confusion is. And I know you have that interactive map. It's, it's helped somewhat. And then the third question that I keep continuing asking, and this is my concern, because you only have 44, you don't, we have 44 people, and you're only funding the state 20, that difference of funding is now available for you to do things. The problem is, what is, what are plans in the future? And that's why we're trying to sit down with everyone to come up with a plan, which I know you're, you're totally for, the core maintenance program, and that has to be done, plus more. But the problem is, there's concerns, and I don't think, we're putting some things where we're just painting the pavement and putting things out, rather than coming up with a true plan that's going to be funded, and that's above your pay grade, and I understand that.
I totally disagree with your remarks about the, we're just painting the, the pavement and, and putting things out, because we're not, we're doing things correctly as we're doing them from here, from here on out. We have been for like the past year. You can ask Dave. I've been on him and on him and on him, and some of the repairs we just made somewhere, we're going to go back and do properly, because they weren't, they weren't adequate by any means. So, that part, I, I don't.
Okay. Well, that's something we'll disagree on.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Now, as far as the budget, we got 22 people working, but we're budgeted for 40 or whatever. We spent that money on road maintenance and on repairs. It's not just laying around somewhere. There's not a bag of $10 million laying in my office.
I agree. No, 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 I agree. My question is, so now what do we do next year? If you hire the 44 people, then you can't use that money for the road repair, so what's the plan? That's what I'm trying, and it isn't you. That's why we're.
Well, no, no, I can, I can help you with that a little bit. I mean.
Okay.
They have increased our budget over last year considerably for all, all the counties of District Four. I don't even remember exactly what Mon County's increase was right off the top of my head. I thought I told you that once before. It was like 1 point, 1.2 million dollars.
1.2 million, they added, yes.
So, yeah, that'll cover way more deficit than our 20 employees would have, would cost us if we could get up the staff. I mean, now, we are spending additional funds with these purchase order contracts that I was talking about.
Right.
You know, that cost a lot more than what it cost our guys to, to do the work, so that's something that we've got to look at once we get the data from using them this year. As far as your map, and that's one thing I've been trying to get to, get with you to talk about, and what we've got done, what we've got done, we're a maintenance organization. We're never going to be complete. We ditch a road, it's going to need maintenance on it. It might need maintenance after the next rain event. So, we might ditch it, call it complete, and you guys go out and look at it two weeks later, and we've had a rain, it might need ditched again. So, I don't know that there's ever going to be a way to get to where you can go out and verify what, what we did on the maintenance side and call it complete and check it and keep on going with it. Now, the roads we upgrade, the roads we pave and get on a pavement plan, and it's like with that, like out there on Route 7, what we've done, yes, we can look at that and say that is complete. But Tom, I'm not sure that there's ever going to be a way, other than looking at that map and saying, yeah, we mowed it, and it was mowed back in April, but now here it is August. Well, it needs mowed again, sir. So, I'm not sure what you're after, or, or what you're trying to get at by holding us to be getting it complete. When we do go through a road and mow it, it's complete. We go through a road and patch the potholes, it's complete. When we go through and ditch a road, it's complete. Now, we might not touch every foot of that ditch, but if it doesn't need work, guys, we don't need to touch it. We can move on. If the water's flowing properly and everything's all right, we can move on. So, your guy might go and look at it and say, well, they only hit three spots. Well, in our former's opinion, those three spots were the only spots that needed to be hit. So, I'm not sure.
And that's where we're having some, a lot of confusion between what people, okay, what people think if you hand something back, you, you complete something, and what your definition of what needs to be done and what the persons or the communities is different, and that's where we're having the major communication.
Absolutely. We, we have a lot of armchair quarterbacks out there. We're hiring every day. We, we're down 12 people. We'll gladly take some good expert advice and good help. That's not a problem.
Well, let me say, and again, I, that's probably a lot of the problem with coming and talking with us, is we're not, we don't want it just to be a Zach session. We just want to have conversations.
Right, no, 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 no.
So, I do thank you for being here today. Thank you for your guys. You know, I, I do appreciate what you're trying to do with what you got, and I know we want to know where we can help you in, in any ways.
All right. No problem. Thank you.
That's what we're here for.
All right.
Thank you. You have reports from county commissioners?
Well, since our county clerk said that she couldn't control what I spoke about, I would like to congratulate her on her recent marriage. Congratulations. I will state, to date, we still do await invitation to meet with the state DOH officials. In the news, I'd like to note this, because it's important to me. The U.S. Senate unanimously passed a PACT Act, which makes animal cruelty a felony, already passed by the House. This should become a federal law and should make the local prosecution of these cases easier, and for that, I am truly thankful. The pad at West Ridge, I've driven by yesterday, and I'd like to note that the pad is going to accommodate. The Bass Pro Shop is currently being cleared and worked on, so you're going to start to see things happen that is right beside the interstate. Last Friday, of course, was the official grand opening of the new Aquatic Center at Mylan Park. Also on Friday, I would like to congratulate, although I am a graduate of University High, I will congratulate Morgantown High on its Mohawk victory and hope that this Friday, Preston will also gain a victory and make it into the state playoffs. Yesterday, I did speak with a representative of the Wine and Jazz Festival. Our Camp Muffley does house that, so we've got some plans that we're discussing with them, and also had a construction meeting on the new 4-H and Extension Center at Mylan Park. We believe that Monday, we start to move actual people into, the furniture is being constructed right now, so hopefully, move-in day will start next week on that. Historical Society will meet this Friday, and on Monday, please remember, that's Veterans' Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
In regards to things that have gone on since last meeting, last Thursday, I had my meeting with the Joint Youth Management Agreement Committee. That's the group that's formed to administer the aquatic center and track complex. So, it was a productive meeting. We have to have a few follow-on meetings, but it looks like we're, we're getting, getting where we need to be. Friday, as Commissioner Hawke has mentioned, was the Aquatic Center opening. It's an amazing facility. I understand they had a busy weekend, so that's good, and I hope everybody gets, gets a chance to get out there and see it. It's, it's a wonderful facility. Yesterday, we had our extension building walkthrough. Today's regular business. Tomorrow, I have a MAP Insecurities Committee meeting, and Friday, I have a meeting with Superintendent Campbell and an extension building walkthrough. And I want to thank Carrie for, great minds think alike, because I was sitting there wondering how many of our employees are, are veterans, and I wish all those employees, I wish all the citizens a wonderful Veterans' Day, and we shouldn't forget those people that have given everything to, to give us the ability to sit here and have a conversation and, and agree to disagree, or just basic, basic rights. So, I hope everybody has a wonderful, our veterans have a wonderful day, and everybody remembers a veteran that you know and say a nice, kind word.
Okay. Carrie, I don't usually get to say these two words publicly, but miles or tough. Wishing you the best, Jeff, in the future, so that's really neat. I was fortunate to represent the commissioners Monday, and I gave you, well, I gave packets to Annetta to give to you. It's the AEP-A West Virginia Annual Vendor Expo, and I thought it was just going to be one of these typical things where I go there and then leave. But actually, I stayed the whole day for it. It was amazing, because what we learned was that we do not have to apply for it, but the AEP-A through state contracts gets discounts. And a couple of things that the companies were there was playground equipment. We've already met with some super, park superintendents go out there, and you get a discount along that lines. They also, DeTris was there for signage. So, it was actually a really interesting meeting, and it was, it was really good to go to, and I think you're going to see some of the results very soon from some suggestions that are coming out. Again, I do want to thank Darby. We may not agree on everything, but you did show up, and I appreciate you listening. I only wish that we could get the same working relationship with the states, but I do appreciate what you're doing for the county. Thank you.
Do we have? To a jerk.
Second. We be gone.